Hey, so what are you doing, man? I know, but you're nervous, I was just going to walk in on one here. And I was worried about that. I was afraid of that. I was good.
We'll call this meeting to order. This is City, let's see, actually, I guess it is part of the City Commission meeting. This will be our attempt at electing a mayor and a mayor pro temp. If you would please rise for the invocation and the pledge. Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over this group tonight and that you give us the wisdom to make good decisions for the city of Leesburg. We do this in your name, amen. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I hand this, this meeting off to Al to go through items two and three, I just wanted to make a comment about, I feel very fortunate to have worked with some classy people this year, being mayor and doing the things that, that we did for the city of Leesburg. We got a lot accomplished. I went back this weekend and I watched the, the little lakefront TV thing that Dr. Anne Murray put together. And except for the cheesy acting up front and at the end, if you just looked at the middle, you know, we got a lot done and we got more done than we've ever got done. And, and I'm proud of all you guys for, for being a part of that and, and letting me be the mayor. So with that being said, Al, you take, you get this?
This is just officially just for the selection of the mayor and then turn it back to the mayor for the vote pro temp. So are there any nominations from the commission for mayor?
I'm gonna nominate Jimmy Burry to go another year.
No, it's just open for, no, it's just open for nominations.
Any other nominations? All right. Looks like you get another turn, Mr. Mayor.
So you need a vice mayor now.
What do you got now?
You need a vice mayor.
So you want me to run?
You run that part.
You're not gonna do that?
I'm not gonna do that part.
Okay, let me get, yeah.
You're officially, you're officially the mayor again, so.
When ready, say this is, here we go. Okay.
Okay, now, if we could have a motion to elect the mayor pro temp. Are there any motions for who that should be?
I'd nominate Commissioner Cornell.
Any other discussions? Everybody in agreement? We're good. That's the pro temp. All right. Okay, so I get a pro.
Let the city manager do it?
I guess so. So, all right, this is, this is presented to Jimmy Burry, who was the mayor in recognition of your leadership and dedicated public service as the mayor of the city of Leesburg for 2023. This is presented to you on behalf of the city commission. So, good luck and looks like you'll get one next year too. Y'all might be running me off. Here, how about that? We got. All right. All right, we'll move on to item five, and that's the appointments. These are commission appointments to various boards. If we, you wanna just, gotta have, that's what I left on.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, so we'll start with Personnel Committee. This is a committee that's called as required. Currently, Commissioner Cornell and Commissioner Berry are the representatives. Is there anyone who wants to take their position or would they rather not do it or?
I don't like it.
Does it sound good?
It's fine, man.
Good, perfect, okay. Lake County Action Agency, we have the representative as Commissioner Berry and I'm the alternate and I have no problems with that. You're good? Okay, Lake County League of Cities.
I have no, I have no problem with that.
You're good with that? And Commissioner Cornell is an alter, you're good, okay. All right, Florida League of Cities, Mike, you've been doing that, are you?
Happy to continue.
You're good with that? I'll, I'll be your alternate, that's fine too.
May I be the, may I be the alternate?
Oh, you sure can. You sure can.
Okay.
So the next one is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO. I'm the representative and I would like to stay with that.
I'll keep holding.
I also would invite the alternative, you know, it's just like a meeting here to come to them.
We can both come?
Yeah, you can definitely can sit in the audience. They have public, you know, gets up and talks, so it, but it would be good to see what goes on, so, you know, we, so that'd be great. So the St. John's River Water Management District, I'm that. Would anybody desire to have that, that position?
That goes well with MPO.
Yeah. Okay, we'll get on that. Boy, this is, this is pretty straight. Okay, so do we need to worry about the municipal power agency with Brad and Al and Jim Williams? Are y'all, everybody's all good? Everybody wants to do it again now, same?
Yeah, we'd recommend you keep that same lineup.
Yeah, yeah, we like that. And I'm the represent, let's see.
So that's FMEA.
Yeah, then we get the Municipal Electric Association. And that again is Brad and Al.
The, no, the, you're on the, are you on FMEA?
We did this first.
Yes.
Municipal Power is these three, so we're right here.
I gotta flip flop on my, yes, you're correct. Same, for FMEA, we suggest the same, Brad as the rep and myself as the old.
Anybody, everybody's good with that? Okay, so then the FMPA, the Florida Municipal Power Agency Policymakers Liaison Committee. And I go to that, I enjoy going to that, I would like to continue in that.
Yeah.
And Mike, you're getting, okay, all right. Then we have the Leesburg Center for the Arts, we have Commissioner Berry, you good on that? Excellent. We no longer have the partnership. Yes, that concludes all those, right?
That includes, yeah, that includes kind of the rotating staff committees, if you will. So the next committees are the advisory boards, the Airport Advisory Board, the Lake Public Arts Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Committee. Airport and Parks, obviously, you guys have dealt with that a lot. Leesburg Public Advisory Board, I think we created that in 23. We did not meet, but these three boards, Airport Art and Public Recreation, the Parks and Rec, they're five member boards, but these are the ones where commissioners, you appoint one person each for it to make up the five people. They serve for, they serve for a year, so to make it easy, on the Airport Advisory Board, if you wanna run down Mr. Mayor, everybody, just to confirm or change.
Yeah, if anybody has any changes to the slate on all three boards, you can address them right now, if not?
I'm gonna change my Arts Advisory Board to Richard Colvin.
Okay, there you go.
To who?
From Daniel Stroud to Richard Colvin.
Sorry.
Richard.
Richard.
Colvin.
Colvin, C-O-L.
B-I-N. B-I-N. B-I-N, C-O-L.
Colvin.
Colvin, okay.
All my other appointees are good.
Yeah, and I can, just commenting on the, the Public Art Board, you know, originally that was gonna be kind of our screening board.
For public art.
Yeah, and we just really haven't, haven't gone in that direction, yeah.
They didn't meet twice.
Right, right.
Oh, they didn't meet twice.
Yeah, we were, you know, if you recall, at the time, there were, murals were a big thing and we wanted kind of a screening, you know, some artists to kind of tell us what's good art.
What is the meeting date for this public art advisor? Do you know what day?
It doesn't, it hasn't.
They only met a couple times, yeah.
Okay, so for formality purpose, can, if you would, can I, so on Airport Advisory Board, Commissioners Berry is Marvin King, Commissioner Cornell, Darryl Crane, Commissioner Peterson, Beau Luton, Commissioner Reisman, Byron Oldham, and Mayor Burry, Joe Hargis. On the Public Library or Public Art Board, that would be Berry is Vonda Parker, Cornell is Gail Tyson, Peterson is Vicki Murphy, Reisman is Richard Colvin, and Mayor Burry is Simeon Richardson. And then for Parks and Rec, Berry is Deborah Dabney, Cornell is Claye Bell, Peterson, Joni Smalley, Reisman, Justin Sarsik, and Mayor Burry is Roger Crawford.
Yep. We don't need any analysis or procurement analysis or anything on that stuff? All right. Wait, let's see. Okay, do we have any city manager items?
None.
Roll call.
Commissioner Berry, and nothing else. Commissioner Peterson?
Nothing to like.
Commissioner Reisman?
Nothing.
Commissioner Cornell?
Nothing.
Mayor Burry?
Nothing to me. Okay, so we'll adjourn and we'll get started again at 5:30.
Let's call the meeting to order. This is a city commission meeting here at City Hall. It's Monday, January the eighth, two thousand twenty-four. It's five thirty P. M. As I said, we'll call the meeting to order. We've already had an invocation and a pledge this evening, so we'll move on to item two, proclamations, which we have none. Item three is presentations. We have none. Item four is public comments. This section is reserved for members of the public to bring up matters of concern or opportunities for praise. Issues brought up will not be discussed in detail at this meeting. Issues will either be referred to the proper staff or will be scheduled for consideration at a future city commission meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes, and if you would, please give your name and your address.
I'm Carol Nichols. I live at two oh six one Montclair Road in Leesburg. It's called Oak Ridge condominiums, and it's just really little, like two blocks, one block, and then one block. It's like a four. So we asked for some signs, which L. Minor assigned to the police department. They gave us three really nice signs saying no trespassing violators will be prosecuted. It sort of stopped some of the people breaking through our fences, which we have to pay for over and over. And it's happening again. It's happening even worse. I got a lot of police reports. Most of them are just, you know, breaking through our fences and trespassing and not stealing. But now it's getting to be where they're stealing. And the last one was just a couple of weeks ago, one in the morning, where it happens to be that the neighbor across the street was up smoking, saw the guy coming from the grass onto into the lanai, stole the bike, called the police. The police got there, stopped him from stealing the bike totally, but he ran across the fence over to Berry Park, which is where they usually always go. And our fence is so flimsy that you can push it and break through it and run through it. But this guy jumped over. So he didn't get caught. None of them seemed to ever get caught. You have to catch him once, warn him. Well, even if it's just the trespassing part, because it's our roads that we have to keep up and pay for. Anyway, I want to thank, though, Cliff, Kelsey, and Ryan for coming and putting up some fencing that was broken down by a tree that fell from the city property. And he fixed the fence, fixed the gates to the lift station that belongs to the city, okay? Put the barbed wire back up over there. And the barbed wire attaches across our property just where the city's is, and it stops where our fence continues. I'm not asking for any money. I just want permission to put barbed wire on our fence. And it's not that much fence. We don't have that much property, but we already asked before, and they told us no. But I'm asking again because they said that we, you have ability to override the rules in special circumstances. We're right next to Berry Park, and I'm getting scared because they're starting to go into the lanai and stealing. Please give us permission to put up barbed wire.
Is that, yeah?
Yeah. So Ms. Nichols, I'll get back with you. Dan and I will come visit with you. So obviously, we've got to follow the code. If there's an exception, then we'll have to figure out the process to do that. So we'll be in touch, and we'll advise on where to go from there.
Yeah, I know you guys give away a lot of money to a lot of different things. We're not asking for money. We're just asking for permission to protect ourselves.
Just now.
One idea, Al, if you don't like the barbed wire, authorize them to go like to an eight-foot fence, you know, something taller, because the city ordered, or city code helped me out, Dan, I think it's six feet.
There'd be something like that. Again, you know, it's a private subdivision. You know, we're doing our best to help out where we can. So Dan and I will visit with her and see if we can come up with any reasonable recommendations for y'all.
Any other public comments?
Elliot Ward, seven one twelve Main Street here in Leesburg. Just wanted to thank you guys for like the painting of the garbage cans, the moss out of the trees. Our end of town is looking really good. Just a quick thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, we'll move on now to item five, the consent agenda. Routine items are placed on the consent agenda to expedite the meeting. If the commission or staff wish to discuss any item, the procedure is as follows. First, pull the item or items from the consent agenda. Second, vote on the remaining items with one roll call vote. Third, discuss each pulled item and vote by roll call. Are there any items anyone would like to pull? No items pulled. We'll have a roll call vote on the agenda.
Motion to approve all items.
Second.
Get it done.
Excuse me.
Roll call.
Commissioner Conell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Move on to item six, public hearings and non-routine items. First, we're going to have a second reading of an ordinance. I believe Grant will work some magic on item six A one.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City staff and applicant and anybody else who's here present to provide any testimony on item six A one, CAC Canal Street rezoning, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand so you can be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that all testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would somebody go ahead and introduce formally?
Introduce and be read by title only.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, changing the zoning on approximately zero point zero eight plus minus acres from city of Leesburg Spud planned unit development and R three high-density residential to city of Leesburg P. Public to resolve an encroachment from three fourteen Canal Street onto three hundred Canal Street for property generally located south of Pine Street and east of South Canal Street, lying in section twenty-six, township nineteen South, range twenty-four East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval. Second, any discussion?
Does anybody need, Dan? We may have public comments. Dan, give us a quickie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan Miller, planning and zoning. This is basically a land swap between to clear up some boundary lines and allow appropriate future development for, between the Children's Advocacy Center on Canal Street and the Community Development Corporation also right there together on Canal Street. It will resolve a building encroachment issue from three fourteen South Canal onto three hundred South Canal, and it will correct a split zoning. Occasionally, you have one parcel of land with two zonings on it. We try to avoid those and clean them up when we can. But it's a simple, straightforward zoning land swap, and that's all it is to it.
Anybody have questions for Dan? Any public comment on this? Any other commission questions with the applicant? Do you have anything you want to add for Mr. Kirsty?
No, sir, only if they have any questions they'd like.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Conell?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Could someone please introduce six A two?
Introduce six A two to be read by title only.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, amending the city code of ordinances by modifying chapter seven, article two, building standards, and chapter ten, article two, fire protection and prevention to conform with revised Florida Building Code, eighth edition, two thousand twenty-three, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
For approval?
Second.
Al, this is just a cleaning up, just a quick for the public, please.
Well, cleaning up, adding in the new modifications promulgated by the state legislature for the Florida Building Code. It comes from time to time.
Right. Any questions? Do we need public comment on that?
Open it up to the public. That would be fun.
Any public comment on this second reading? Roll call.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Conell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. First reading of ordinances, we have none. We'll move on to item six C, which is non-routine items. Someone please introduce six C one.
I'll introduce six C one A to be read by title only.
Resolution of the city commission of the city of Leesburg, Florida, appointing one member to the Leesburg Police Pension Plan Trustee Board for a four-year term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval? No, nominate, sorry. It was the, there was only one, right?
Right.
Tom Brown?
Yeah, existing member.
I'll make a motion to approve Tom Brown, the existing member. He was our only applicant.
William Boland.
Boland, sorry. Mr. Bud Boland.
Tom Brown wasn't expected. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Conell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Al, you had a comment you wanted about John. I can't remember which.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so at the pension board meeting in December, John Summersdorf was recommended by the pension board to be the member that serves, that serves both parties, or picked by both parties is a better word. So remember, that's a five-member board. The members of the pension pick two members. You all pick two members. Your term ended, and you just reappointed Mr. Boland. Mr. Summersdorf's appointment was ending as well. You will then ratify his appointment based on the recommendation of the pension board because both the members and the commission picked the fifth member. That'll be on your agenda, and we'll put that on consent for the twenty-second.
Any questions? All right. Let's move on. Someone please introduce six C B.
I'll introduce six C one B to be read by title only.
Resolution of the city commission of the city of Leesburg, Florida, appointing two members to the Carver Heights, Montclair area, excuse me, Community Redevelopment Agency Board for a four-year term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, so it's on the floor.
Yeah, so you need two members to, you have two appointments for, carry four-year terms. So you might make recommendations, second vote.
Okay. We have four applicants.
Four applicants for two positions.
For two positions. Do we have any motion for one of the applicants?
May I make a recommendation?
Would you like to hear from the applicants?
May I make a recommendation before we listen to the applicants?
I don't see why not.
Is that open for? So can I say?
Yeah.
Well, I have been, the board and committee appointments hold significant importance. In my district, we have the privilege of having two CRA boards, and I'm excited to make the first recommendations. I believe it's crucial to formally state and clarify the basis for the recommendations. Within District One, we have two district CRA boards. This presents us with the unique opportunity to engage and empower enthusiastic, interested, and highly qualified individuals who are eager to lead and contribute to their respective communities. My primary goal is to ensure that both the Carver Heights, Montclair area CRA board and the Greater Leesburg Community CR board continue to offer residents valuable opportunities to take leadership roles, gain knowledge, and collaborate with the city government, enhancing our communities. By making these recommendations, I aim to foster greater community involvement, diverse skills, and knowledge sharing, and more collaborative efforts, ultimately leading to improvement of our neighborhoods and well-being of our residents in the city of Leesburg. To this end, I'm imposing the following recommendations for a board to consider. For the Carver Heights CRA, I recommend Ms. Teresa Connor and Mr. Robert Alderman.
Any other comments from commissioners? At this time, we'd like to give, this time, we'd like to give those folks running for those positions an opportunity to speak. So is Mr. Alderman here?
Sir.
Come on up to the mic, please.
Do you want the three minutes?
Yeah, we're going to do three minutes. We'll give you three.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Robert Alderman. I live in Carver Heights on Beecher Street. So I'm here to see if I can offer any valuable input because I live in that community, and I see what goes on from day to day. I don't see everything, you know, because I'm at work. But I think I could add some input to maybe, you know, helping to better the community, you know, by offering maybe ideas or advice on maybe what can be placed in the, in the community to, you know, make it more appealing for others, make it safer, and also, you know, even things to provide access for the elderly so they can have an outlet. Because there's a lot of things that, you know, there's just no outlets for certain things to, you know, so it just creates an environment for trouble. So I think if we had some other things there that would provide outlets, you know, for elderly, for the youth. I know they have the youth center over there, but there could probably be some more. And I think just, I don't know all, but I think collaborating with some people that maybe we can come up with some ideas to make things better.
Thank you, sir.
That's it for me. Thank you.
How about Ms. Teresa Connor?
Good evening. I am Teresa Connor, and I have applied for the Carver Heights CRA Board. And applying for this position, I feel that being a part of this community that I have resided in for the past thirty-plus years, that it would be a pleasure to help the redevelopment agency improve and revitalize that area once again. I'm offering a set of fresh eyes. Being that I've been a nurse for forty-two years, I think I'm capable of doing the community and assessing to see what is needed and what we need to improve upon, and working with the commissioners as well. Also, my family, I think Kevin Connor is my brother that did hold a position here, and my father, Abraham Connor, as well. He was a builder in his youthfulness, so for the city of Leesburg, in Leesburg, and I think he built this building here. So in closing, I do want to say, being that I also, my family does a cancer program yearly, and we have commit, served that for the past thirteen and we have committed, served that for the past 13 years. I brought that to the community to try to get our community in learning more about cancer illnesses and things that we can help them with. And we have raised close to $40,000 that we have provided to the American Cancer Society. So I'm hoping that I can get on this board as CRA to uplift that neighborhood back to where we would like for it to be. And I also want to reiterate what Ms. Alderman was saying, because I do have a mission that I would love to see the elderly somewhere where they can do daytime activities within that community, or maybe we can get, say, an elderly Uber where we can pick them up and do that type things with that community as well. Also, I want to get involved, those youth that kind of fly right through that area, to help and put them into work in that community. And I think that's the only way that we would be able for them to appreciate where they're living. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jasper?
Good evening, Dr. Jasper, Dr. Erica Jasper. I'm currently on the CRA board and have had a wonderful time administering with the commission, so I thank you all for your excellent leadership. Mayor Berry, as well. I am up for grabs for the second round. I love Leesburg. I am involved in various activities and boards throughout Leesburg and also throughout Lake County. I serve on the Leesburg CDC Board. I also am an executive, on the Executive Board for HIP Home and Partnership. Also, too, I'm very involved in the Leesburg community. I know people have spoken about wanting to get involved, but the question is, what are you doing now to take the CRA to a greater level? I have been working continuously with the CRA, I guess, President, so to speak, Sandra Wilson, and the Housing Department as well to try to improve the housing for local residents here of Leesburg. I do have a local scholarship that I'm able to be a blessing to some of the students and the residents here of Leesburg. So I'm super excited about serving once again another four more years as we move forward to greater things for the beautiful city of Leesburg. I was born and raised here, and I am a graduate of Leesburg High School, 1996. Let's go Yellow Jacket! So I'm excited, and I ask for your vote as I continue to move forward. We all have a working relationship, and I just would like to have your vote. So thank you once again, commission moving forward. Thank you.
And Mr. Littlejohn?
Hello, everyone. My name is Orlynda Littlejohn, and I am a candidate for this position as well. I was also raised here in Leesburg, Florida. I'm from Carver Heights. I left at age 19, and I've traveled. I lived in Tampa, I lived in China, graduated from Florida A&amp;M, and now I'm back home here. And there's just a lot of things that I haven't seen that have changed so much in my neighborhood. And yes, Ms. Erica Jasper, I've worked with her, I've worked with Ms. Berry, and, you know, I love the collaboration that, you know, these women are doing. But I know that we can do more, and I want to be a part of that. I want to be a part of continually seeing my community grow, as I know it can grow. I believe in partnering with the city commissioners and just really working together to really see some true change in the community. I'm here, I'm on board to help and assist any way that I can, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Hearing from all the applicants, is there a motion for any particular... We'll take it one at a time.
Well, first of all, you know, I appreciate all four applicants. So four of you make it tough. I would like to see, you know, with her experience, I'd like to see Dr. Erica Jasper continue. Other than that, I'm turning to rest of the commission for help on the other one.
Is there that a motion?
Okay, I will make a motion to nominate Dr. Erica Jasper.
Do we have a second?
That's where I was heading. That's where I was looking. You did make a motion with two, so...
But we need to do one at a time.
There's a motion on the floor. I think you made the motion for Alderman and...
Teresa Connors and Robert Alderman.
So that was a motion. So you would need to second that motion or not second that motion. If you don't have a second, then you can break it down one at a time or have another slate. You're correct.
Is there a motion? There's a motion?
There is a motion from Commissioner Berry, and she nominated Alderman and Connors.
I'll second. Is that what you got, Grant? You good on that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, I know there was recommendation for those two names that was made, so I think that would certainly be equivalent of a motion there, nomination of sorts.
But it's two, so we need to split it. We need to vote one at a time.
Yeah, it's not a ticket kind of thing here. It's individual.
Do I need to restate my...
So you should.
Yeah, if you want to restate for one at a time, that would be appropriate, Commissioner. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to consider the recommendation for Teresa Connor for the West... Excuse me, for the Carver Heights Montclair CRA Board.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. We have any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Cunnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reesman?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Now, with regards to the second item, second position.
I'd like to make a motion to consider my recommendation for Mr. Robert Alderman Jr. for the Carver Heights Montclair Area CRA Board.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Reesman?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunnell?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Okay, so we have those two positions filled. Now we'd like to move on to the Greater Leesburg Community CRA. Somebody please introduce 6C1C.
I'll introduce 6C1C to be read by title only.
Resolution of the City Commission of the city of Leesburg, Florida, appointing two members to the Greater Leesburg Community Redevelopment Agency Board for a four-year term to expire December 31, 2027, and providing an effective date.
What should we do, East and West? Yeah. Yeah, I just want to give the public a little... The downtown CRA, it's a seven-member body. It's made up of five city commissioners plus two members appointed by the city commission to serve four-year terms. The appointed members must reside or conduct business in the CRA as follows. One appointed member must live or conduct business in the district on the east side of Canal Street, while the other appointed member must live or conduct business on the west side of Canal Street. So we're electing two folks, and at this particular time, the east side member, Betty Stevens Coney, her term ends, it ended December of '23, and on the west side was James Reed. His term ended December of '23. So we have two applicants for the east side, and we have three applicants for the west side. I think before we discuss, and I'm letting... Does anyone have a... You have an opinion you'd like to offer before? Because we are going to give them an opportunity to speak.
Yes, I would recommend, I'd like to recommend Ms. Samantha Ponder for the east side. And I would like to recommend John Sokol for the west side.
Any other commissioners with...
I'll wait till I hear the...
We'd like to hear from the members. Okay, so we'll start on the east side. We'll ask Ms. Betty Coney. Are you here?
Yes, I am. Good evening to our mayor and commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to have been working on the Greater Leesburg CRA since 2019, and it is my pleasure to continue to work on this committee, to continue the work that we've started, to continue to make progress in our Leesburg area. I have been working in the Leesburg area for years, and as we look at the definition of work, whether we look at it as a noun or a verb, I can render to you proof of each of those asterisks that defines work. For an example, I have been on the CRA CDC Board since the mid-1990s, serving as a founding charter member, and that work led us to demolishing houses, over 50 houses in that area, and recreating what is now called Heritage Village, creating over 30 houses for residents of the area. Also, when it comes to work, I have served in all of the schools in the Leesburg area, particularly on the east side. When it comes to work, I have surrendered my time with what you may remember as the work that was started by Jim Archie and Jim Miller, and I produced just under 50 presentations about the history of Leesburg. If you will remember, John Leslie hosted those, and I produced all of them, doing the research and the presentation of them. I have been serving in this community for the majority of my life, and right now, what we have on the board, and I've enjoyed working with, is to create historical markers at various places, particularly to at St. Stephen African Methodist Episcopal Church, because that site was the first school, as well as Mount Olive Church. Also, we are looking at, and we have the approval of this illustrious board, for bathrooms to be at John L. Johnson Park, where there presently no bathrooms. And just the other day, one of the gentlemen said that they don't go to the park anymore because there's no place to relieve them personally. So we would like to continue that work, plus other work that we would like to get done for our community. I love the city of Leesburg. I love working in the community, and I'd like to continue. Thank you so much.
And do we have, let's see, Ms. Samantha Ponder?
Miss morning.
Yeah, Ms. Ponder couldn't make it. She contacted us. She anticipated being here, but she expressed her desire to be on the CRA. East side rep.
All right. So did we go ahead and elect the...
It's up to you. You might have... I would suggest do the east side and then do the west.
We've heard the presentations. Are there any other comments from commissioners regarding the selection of one of the candidates?
You've got a motion on the floor on the east side from Commissioner Berry.
Right. So we have a motion for the appointment of Ms. Samantha Ponder. Is there a second?
No, second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reesman?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. So now moving over to the west side. Could we please hear from Mr. Huey?
Good evening, good evening, commission. My name is Michael Huey. I am a business owner here in downtown Leesburg. I know I'm probably the younger applicant here and the shorter resume, but that doesn't stop me from having the desire to help and improve this community as much as I can. I try to build relationships with landlords, business owners, some that are harder to get in touch with than others. So I have those positive relationships, and I plan on living in this town and spending the rest of my life here. I really want to see this community improve, and that's why I want to be on this board, to look not to the past but to the present, and to continue our town for a very long time. So I'm going to keep it short and sweet. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sokol?
Sorry. Good evening, commissioners. My name is John Sokol. I'm a business owner downtown. I've been here since 2016. Besides owning two businesses, The Warehouse and The Great Chicago Fire Brewery, I'm also a landowner. I own four pieces of property in this downtown area, so I have a vested interest on both sides. I... The downtown is definitely the point that I think that anchors a lot of what happens in Leesburg, and I've seen a lot of positive growth, and I would love to see that that growth continue. I'm a past president of the DLBA, a current vice president of the Downtown Leesburg Business Association, I'm a member of Rotary, and I think that I think I can add a lot. In the old community I came from, I was a member of the CRA. At that point, I owned a lot of property, too, and I realized the value of a business and how the businesses should have some, a voice, and be involved, and really make a difference in the community. I was always raised that I can't take something out of community unless I'm willing to put something back into the community, and that's what I want to do. And I think that by being on this board, I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Elliot Ward?
Elliot Ward, Blue Island Sportswear. I'm the new kid on the block, but I believe we've already, I've already made it to the chamber board as well, and my passions speak for itself. And I've worked with several each one of you, and I'm here regardless, whether I get this or not, we're still going to keep pushing. I live here in Leesburg, and we've invested a lot of money here, and we're happy to help.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so currently, we have a... Currently, we have a motion for Mr. John Sokol. Do we have a second for that motion?
Yeah, second.
Second for that motion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reesman?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Okay, so we've elected our members. So we'll move on now to the informational reports. We have none. How about city attorney items?
No reports. Happy New Year, everybody. It's good to be back and look forward to a good 2024 with everyone.
City manager items?
Just a couple reminders. Coming up on Friday, January 12, at 7:30 a.m. at the Venetian Center, is the Community Breakfast honoring Dr. Martin Luther King. And secondly, on Saturday, January 20, starting at 11 a.m. in downtown Leesburg, is our annual Martin Luther King Parade, so everybody can make it there. The parade will also be followed by a Soul Fest in downtown from noon till 6 p.m. So we'll have vendors, artists, food, and music. Hope everybody can make it and celebrate Dr. King. On another note, just wanted to let the commission know, and I'll be super brief. House Bill 1277 was filed by Representative Cabrera from South Florida. It is a repeat of the anti-municipal utility, specifically electric utility, legislation that was put before the state legislature last year. At this time, it doesn't have a Senate companion, so fingers are crossed, and hopefully we'll escape this. I'll get more information, but obviously, FMEA and FMPA are on it. I've already spoke with Ryan Matthews, our lobbyist, about it. I've planned to meet with Mr. Matthews this week, and this will obviously be a bill that we will watch as the session moves forward.
Roll call.
Commissioner Peterson?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Berry?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Cunnell?
No, no.
Commissioner Reesman?
Just real quick, when, will we have the Bike Fest alcohol discussion next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're, we had the draft, we had the holiday interruption, and we got a draft, I think it's on my computer, coming from Grant here shortly, so.
Okay, so next meeting.
We'll be on the agenda for the 22nd.
Thank you. That'll be it for me, thank you.
Mayor Berry?
Nothing tonight. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.